Good evening and welcome to the Municipality of Anchorage zoning Board of Examiners and Appeals meeting for November 14th, 2019. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Ellen McKay.
Here.
Dale Smythe.
Here.
Stephanie Iker.
Here.
Ken Ayers.
Here.
Dave Hale.
Here.
Monica Emmerton.
Here.
Jonathan Lang.
Here.
Tonya Hickock is absent, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. We have minutes for Thursday, October the 10th, 2019. Can I have a positive motion, please? Ready, please? I don't have a place on a... Ms. Iker. And Mr. Ayers, seconds. Are there any changes, additions, deletions? Everybody's read them, everybody's fine? Okay, is there any objection to approval of the minutes? Seeing none, the minutes are approved. And the next item of business is Special Order of Business disclosures. Are there any disclosures? Mr. Lang.
Yes, with regards to last month's meeting, I recuse myself from case 2019-0117, so I need to not vote on the approval of that in the consent agenda.
Okay. Any other disclosures? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of all the matters before the board that do not require a public hearing. All items are approved by motion without debate. Do I have, can I have a positive motion, please? Ms. Iker. Mr. Smythe, seconds. Does any member want to remove an item from the consent agenda for discussion? Seeing none, is there any objection to approval of the consent agenda? Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved and we move on to the next item on the agenda, that there is something on the agenda, which are public hearings. So, the two cases that tonight are variance hearings and there's a procedure that I need to discuss. The Chair shall introduce the variance and explain the procedure to be followed. Okay, so this is the procedure for variance hearings. Case number and the name of the applicant shall be read into the record. The board shall hear and rule on any objections to sufficiency of notice. Then the staff will present a brief outline of the variance and board members and the applicant may then ask questions of the staff through the Chair. The applicant has a total of 10 minutes to present their case and may reserve time for rebuttal. Throughout the proceedings, the burden of proof rests upon the applicant to convince the board by a preponderance of evidence that the variance should be granted. Board members and the staff may then ask questions of the applicant through the Chair. The hearing shall then be open for public testimony. Representatives of groups have five minutes, individuals have three minutes, and the time is kept by the Secretary. The display at the front will be green to within one minute of the time allowed and then will turn yellow. At this time, you should sum up your testimony. At the end of the time allowed, the light will turn red and a tonal sound. All persons who testify may be questioned by the board members, the staff, and the applicant. On the conclusion of the public testimony, the staff, followed by the applicant, shall have right of rebuttal. After that, the Chair will then close the public hearing and the matter rests with the board. An action by the board shall require the favorable vote of a majority of the fully constituted board. The fully constituted board shall include all members of the board, including vacancies, not excuse for conflict of interest. For a variance to be granted, all eight standards must be met, and it takes five positive votes. Every final decision by the board shall clearly state on its face that it is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case and that the parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to appeal to Superior Court. Okay? First case, case number 2019-0137, and the petitioner is Adam Ebnet, he indicates he is in attendance. So, will the staff please describe the notice given in this case?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On October 23rd, 2019, 103 public hearing notices were sent out to neighboring property owners in accordance with the procedures of Anchorage Municipal Code Title 21, Chapter 3, Subsection 020H. Notices of public hearing were also mailed to the Hillside and Huffman-O'Malley Community Councils. Thank you.
Are there any objections to the sufficiency of notice? Seeing none, will the staff please present the case?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The petitioner requests a variance from Anchorage Municipal Code Title 21, Chapter 6, Subsection 020, Table 21 dot 061, Table of Dimensional Standards Residential Districts to allow a detached garage to encroach 10 feet into a required 25-foot side setback and a variance from Anchorage Municipal Code Title 21, Chapter 7, Subsection 020B, stream setbacks to allow a detached garage to encroach no more than 22 feet into a required 50-foot stream protection setback and to allow an existing shed to encroach no more than 38 feet into a required 50-foot stream protection setback. The planning department has reviewed the application and presents the following findings. For standard A, we believe this standard is met. There appear to be exceptional physical circumstances of the land that warrant the granting of this variance. The subject parcel is affected by an unnamed perennial stream which requires a 50-foot stream protection setback measured from both sides of the ordinary high-water mark. Planning staff conducted an analysis of the subject parcel using GIS software and current municipal stream data. Considering the size of the stream protection setback, the total area on property affected by this setback is approximately 25,394 square feet. Additionally, when considering the amount of area encumbered by yard setbacks, which is approximately 18,800 square feet, the developable area on this 51,802-square-foot lot in which a single-family home and accessory structures greater than 150 square feet can be placed is only 7,608 square feet. While this amount of area may appear to be adequate to accommodate a reasonably-sized home and accessory structures, the developable area is encumbered by topography which limits the area where structures can be placed. Factoring in the max lot coverage within the R6 district is 30%, the subject parcel would theoretically be allowed a total of 15,541 square feet of structure within it if it were not encumbered by the stream protection setback. Because of the setback, the applicant is limited to less than half of that amount. In addition, the developable area is triangular in shape, which makes it difficult to locate a conforming structure within it. And I think this is clearly illustrated on page 10 of the staff packet. If you'll reference the graphic that's on there. This is a significant impediment to the development of other lots in the area, which other lots in the area may not be subject to other development obstacles such as wetlands do not affect this parcel. For standard B, the planning department believes this standard is met. This lot is encumbered by a perennial stream which requires a 50-foot stream protection setback. The setback encumbers approximately 1/2, 49% of the lot. After applying yard setbacks, the owner is only able to develop 7,608 square feet, which is approximately 15% of the subject parcel. This is a significant impediment to development on a lot with a total area of 51,802 square feet. Detached garages and small sheds are commonly enjoyed amenities within a Class B residential district and are permitted under Anchorage Municipal Code. These types of structures enhance the rural feel of the R6 district and allow for secure dry storage of property. Strict application of code will create an exceptional or undue hardship upon the property owner and will deprive the applicant of the rights commonly enjoyed by other properties within the same district. For standard C, we believe this standard is met. The current homeowner purchased the home in 2018 and did not construct any of the existing structures. Thus, the homeowner is limited on where they can place accessory structures due to physical constraints imposed by the placement of the existing structure. The location of the stream channel is out of the control of the owner, and the required stream protection setback is a significant encumbrance on this parcel. The applicant has chosen to locate the detached garage in this orientation to reduce the amount of necessary land disturbance by utilizing the existing gravel driveway which leads to and runs along the western property boundary. For standard D, the planning department believes this standard is partially met. Given the character history and current zoning of the neighborhood, it does not appear at this time that the granting of this variance will adversely affect the use of adjacent properties. However, there is a 25-foot drainage easement which runs along the western property boundary of the petition site. It is unclear to reviewing staff if this easement is in current use or what facilities may be present within it. A condition of approval for the applicant to obtain an encroachment permit from the municipal right-of-way section to allow for the proposed detached garage to be constructed within this easement is recommended. At the time the encroachment permit is applied, four potential impacts to the function of this drainage easement will be evaluated to ensure the neighboring property owners will not be negatively affected from flooding and/or impeded drainage as a result of this variance. For standard E, we believe this standard is met. The requested variance will not change the character of the zoning district in which the petition site is located. The R6 district is intended primarily for detached single-family and two-family residential dwellings on large lots with gross densities of one dwelling unit per acre. Granting the side and stream protection setback encroachment will not permit either a principal or accessory use other than what is already permitted under current code. For standard F, we believe this standard is partially met. It is likely that there will be no adverse impacts to the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the municipality if the variance is approved. The variance will have minimal to no impact on neighboring residents in terms of impeding traffic flow or view sheds. However, granting this variance may limit the ability of adjacent property owners to make full use of their land if the proper function of a 25-foot drainage easement running along the western property line is adversely impacted. To mitigate impacts to this easement, it is recommended that the applicant obtain an encroachment permit to allow the proposed detached garage to encroach within the 25-foot drainage easement. At the time this encroachment permit is reviewed, potential impacts to the function of the drainage easement will be evaluated. And standard G is met simply because it's just not applicable, this standard is not applicable to detached, single-family dwellings. Standard H, we believe this standard is not met. Although detached garages and sheds are commonly enjoyed amenities, precluding them from being placed on this lot will not affect the parcel's ability to accommodate a single-family home. Illegal, non-conforming, single-family home exists on this parcel and can remain until such time as it is willfully demolished or destroyed. There does appear to be adequate space available for the existing garage to be expanded to the north. This expansion would be smaller than the proposed detached garage, but it would be possible to be constructed in conformance with land use code. So, Anchorage Municipal Code Title 21, Chapter 3, Subsection 240G2 requires that all eight standards be substantially met in order for a variance to be granted. The department finds that standard H is not met and standards D and F are only partially met. Standards A, B, C, E, and G are met. Therefore, staff must recommend denial of this variance. However, if after a public hearing the board finds all eight standards are substantially met, then the approval should be subject to the conditions 1, 2, and 3 as shown in page 8 of the staff report. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions if the board has any. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions by staff? If there are any questions of staff by the board? Ms. Iker.
Thank you. Through the Chair, I was wondering if you could please speak a little bit more about the recommendation to obtain an encroachment permit from the municipal right-of-way section and if discussions were already had or if that information could have been obtained before submitting this application for the variance request?
So, through the Chair, that encroachment permit, to my understanding and talks with the right-of-way section, cannot be granted until the structure is actually built. So, it's something that is with their processing. They can speak with the applicant and give them some level of assurance that that permit would be issued, but they cannot actually issue it until the structure is built. Does that answer your question?
It does. It's just a little confusing because we don't know if items D and F are in fact only partially met or would have any impact at all, but we have no way of knowing that until after the structure is built.
Through the Chair, so the applicant is welcome to go and speak with right-of-way and street maintenance. I don't believe that there is any infrastructure present within that easement, but that's just my opinion based upon looking at the topography of the site and as well as the function of that site. That was platted, that easement was platted in 1983, so almost 40 years ago. And to my understanding, they never, they have not been utilizing it as a drainage easement. It just occurs on the plat, and we can't ignore it, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any other questions of the board, of the staff by the board? Are there any questions of the staff by the applicant? He indicates not. Okay, so will the applicant or the applicant's representative please come forward? And state and spell your name for the record.
Adam Ebnet. A-D-A-M-E-B-N-E-T.
And please present your case.
As you read through the application, my family moved from a...
You need to speak into the...
My family and I moved from a small lot in West Anchorage, and that lot didn't allow for any additional structures or RV parking, so that's when we decided to take our whole life savings and buy this house that had a much larger lot in hopes of building my detached dream garage that I've always wanted. Quickly found out that it wasn't as easy as getting a building permit and hiring a contractor and constructing it, and now we're here, $1,800 of my own and many hours of myself and others that have helped me in this variance process, and still no building or building permit or building. I'll touch on just the areas that are, that were, or standards that were just partially met or not met. Section D about the drainage easement, the 25-foot drainage easement, seems, there's little known about it or a lot of confusion about this easement now that, going through this variance process. Kyle Cunningham was out to the property at a GPS stream to get the exact coordinates of it, and at the time he had mentioned that he thought this easement was from the old days, as Ryan stated, from 1983, I believe, old way of zoning, and that it might not be applicable anymore and just needs to be removed from the plot and any other documents. And it wouldn't physically be possible to make this area a drainage area just by the lay of the land and the other features. And also the existing electrical and telephone easement that cuts through this drainage easement would make it nearly impossible to turn it into any type of drainage in the future. So, I think the appropriate departments need to review and reconsider this easement. Section F, as I stated in D, I think the departments need to review and consider removing the easement. I'd only be building 10 feet at most into this easement. Section F, or, excuse me, section 8, I do realize that there is space for making addition on my existing garage to the north. This option would be less than ideal and would be considerably smaller and not fully meet my needs, and also would cut down on the curb appeal having all the garage doors and that much house right off the curb. And ultimately doesn't meet my dreams of having my own detached garage. And I would also run into the same issues with the front side and stream setbacks with this addition, and it's not guaranteed that that option would be approved at all. And I'd potentially lose access to the backyard where I currently park my RV and boat. And as Ryan stated there earlier, that the existing shed and the drive on the west side of the property, those were put in by previous owners long before I ever bought this place last year. And during the sale of the house, there's no issues with the setbacks at that time. Nothing had come up and we weren't even, I wasn't even aware that it would be an issue. Lastly, to put it into perspective, this district on the hillside is considered a horse zone, for lack of better words. There's several properties with horse barns, stables, horse pits. And I think my detached garage would be far and less intrusive than any of these equestrian properties in the area that surround this unnamed stream, just to kind of put it into perspective. That's it.
Okay. You have about three and a half minutes of rebuttal time.
Okay.
Are there any questions of the applicant by the board members? Mr. Ayers?
Through the Chair, Mr. Ebnet. If we were to deny the variance for this proposed structure in the proposed location, would you consider relocating this garage north of the house? Even though it would still require a variance in the stream protection setback?
I suppose, I mean, I wouldn't have any other option.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Smythe?
Mr. Ebnet, I was through the Chair. I was curious if you had any input from your neighbors. I was looking through the rest of the documents here for other information. I didn't see anything. Have any, has that been broached with your neighbor to the, directly to the, adjacent to the property you're talking about?
Yeah, the neighbors to the left, they were the first ones I actually went to because they're the one and only ones that it would affect at all, and they were all for it, and he supported it. And I believe he did reply back to the variance, but I didn't see any of the people that were for the variance. I didn't see any other documents come through in the report.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Emmerton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Have you seen the staff recommendations 1 through 3 for that are approval? Yeah. Okay. Do you have any issues with any of those? Let me glance at them. Basically, one is you, well, we've got the variance for approval, required setbacks that need to happen to the stream, and then there's you need to, within one year, record a notice of zoning action with a final as-built, and then the encroachment permit from the right-of-way. Those would be the three things.
Okay, yeah, no issues there.
Okay. Did they, did the right-of-way talk to you about how much the encroachment permit would be?
No.
I'm just curious. I don't even know what it is.
No, I don't.
You just mentioned 1,800, so I didn't know if anybody had talked to...
Yeah, the 1,800 was just the variance fees and...
In that, okay.
Plodding and that, but no, I have no clue how much that fee would be.
I don't either, but I just was curious. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify in case 2019-0137? Anyone from the public? Seeing none. Are there any questions of the applicant? Nope, 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 we're done there. Never mind. Okay. Does the staff have any rebuttal?
No, Madam Chair.
Does the applicant have anything else that he wishes to say?
No.
Okay, he indicates not. So, we're going to close the public hearing and the matter rests with the board. May I have a positive motion, please? Ms. Emmerton?
I move to approve case 2019-0137 based on department recommendations 1 through 3.
And Ms. Iker?
I second.
Seconds. Could you speak to your motion, please?
Yes. I do intend to support my motion. We do have staff's findings. I understand the partially met, and I understand we cannot find those to be fully met until a right-of-way permit is granted, which can't be done until after it's, after the building has been built. So, I think that this is a chicken and egg situation for at least those two partially met standards. So, those, in my opinion, become substantially met. So, I think that leaves us with the fact that there is room, not exactly for the garage that the petitioner wants, but there is room to add a garage to the house. I think, in my opinion, the petitioner made a good point when he mentioned that there's a bunch of different horse facilities on this property, and I would wonder if he had titled this as a horse facility, because I don't think anybody would probably suggest that the petitioner attach a horse facility to his house, because I don't think that most people would probably want to do that, just with the noise and everything else. So, in my, I would argue that that finding is substantially met because it's in line with the other things that are happening in the neighborhood, other things that have been allowed in the neighborhood that would not have been able to be attached to his house. So, I do intend to support my motion. Those are my findings to support it.
I don't think you're correct about him wanting to have horses on the property.
No.
Okay, okay. Ms. Iker, do you have?
I also intend to support the motion. Like Ms. Emmerton, I appreciated staff's clarification with regards to the ability for us to resolve the encroachment permit issue, I guess I should say our inability to resolve the encroachment permit issue. So, based on the information that we have before us today, I think that standards D and F are met, and I don't see those as an impediment to support the motion. What I'm struggling with a little bit more is item H, and standard H, in my mind, is met mostly in part because of the extreme constraints that are placed on the property and how big this lot is and how the topography and all of the setbacks have essentially rendered the buildable area less than 50%. And to me, that's really impactful because what petitioner is requesting does not seem unreasonable for this size of lot in this area.
any of the people that were for the variance. I didn't see any other documents come through in the report.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Emmerton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Have you seen the staff recommendations one through three for that are approval?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have any issues with any of those?
Let me glance at them.
Basically, one is you, well, we've got the variance for approval, required setbacks that need to happen to the stream, and then there's the, you need to, within one year, record a notice of zoning action with an final ASBelt, and then the encroachment permit from the right-of-way. Those would be the three things.
Okay, yeah, no issues there.
Okay. Did they, did the right-of-way talk to you about how much the encroachment permit would be?
No.
I'm just curious, I don't even know what it is.
No, I don't.
You just mentioned 1,800, so I didn't know if anybody had talked to-
Yeah, the 1,800 was just the variance fees and-
In that, okay.
Plodding and that, but no, I have no clue how much that fee would be.
I don't either, but I just was curious. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify in case 2019-0137? Anyone from the public? Seeing none. Are there any questions of the applicant? Nope, 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 we're done there. Never mind. Okay. Does the staff have any rebuttal?
No, Madam Chair.
Does the applicant have anything else that he wishes to say? Okay, he indicates not. So we're going to close the public hearing, and the matter rests with the board. May I have a positive motion, please? Ms. Emmerton?
I move to approve case 2019-0137, based on department recommendations one through three.
And Ms. Iker?
I second.
Seconds. Would you speak to your motions, please?
Yes. I do intend to support my motion. We do have staff's findings. I understand the partially met, and I understand we cannot find those to be fully met until a right-of-way permit is granted, which can't be done until after it's, after the building has been built. So I think that this is a chicken and egg situation for at least those two partially met standards. So those, in my opinion, become substantially met. So I think that leaves us with the fact that there is room, not exactly for the garage that the petitioner wants, but there is room to add a garage to the house. I think, in my opinion, the petitioner made a good point when he mentioned that there's a bunch of different horse facilities on this property, and I would wonder if he had titled this as a horse facility, because I don't think anybody would probably suggest that the petitioner attach a horse facility to his house, because I don't think that most people would probably want to do that, just with the noise and everything else. So in my, I would argue that that finding is substantially met because it's in line with the other things that are happening in the neighborhood, other things that have been allowed in the neighborhood that would not have been able to be attached to his house. So I do intend to support my motion. Those are my findings to support it.
I don't think you're correct about him wanting to have horses on the property.
No.
Okay, okay. Ms. Iker, do you have?
I also intend to support the motion. Like Ms. Emmerton, I appreciated staff's clarification with regards to the ability for us to resolve the encroachment permit issue, I guess I should say, our inability to resolve the encroachment permit issue. So based on the information that we have before us today, I think that standards D and F are met, and I don't see those as an impediment to support the motion. What I'm struggling with a little bit more is item H, and standard H, in my mind, is met mostly in part because of the extreme constraints that are placed on the property and how big this lot is, and how the topography and all of the setbacks have essentially rendered the buildable area less than 50%. And to me, that's really impactful because what petitioner is requesting does not seem unreasonable for this size of lot in this area with other uses on adjacent neighboring property. And so for that reason, I do intend to support the motion and find that standard H is met.
Okay, seeing none. I intend not to support this motion for a couple of different reasons. I see that the, the place where the petitioner wants to locate the detached garage, it's kind of a, it's between disturbing the natural vegetation and the stream setback. So if he puts it to the north of the house, he disturbs quite a bit of natural vegetation, or he puts it in the stream setback. And looking at the Huffman O'Malley Community Council oppose the variance. Two of the public comments were in opposition, and I think probably the biggest thing for me was the watershed management services also object to the variance because of the stream setback. So I will not be supporting the motion. With that, we should vote. Five yes votes, and the variance is approved. Okay, the next case is case 2019-0139, Amy and Aaron DeBrault. Are they in attendance? Yes, indicate they are. So will the staff please describe the notice given in this case?
On September 24th, 2019, a total of 178 public hearing notices were mailed, and the Spinarred Community Council also received a notice.
Any objections to the sufficiency of notice? Seeing none, we'll move on. Will the staff please present the case?
Thank you. This is a request to allow an existing garage to continue encroaching five feet into the required five-foot side setback on the eastern lot line and 15.1 feet into the required 20-foot front setback on the southern lot line. An ASBelt survey included in the application in section two of this report shows smaller encroachments as measured from the building foundation. However, the eaves of the garage result in larger actual encroachments that are cited in this report. Measurements of the eaves themselves are also included in the applicant's application. On the subject lot, or the subject lot is located in R2M Mixed Residential Zoning District in the Spinarred Community Council between Taft Drive and Harding Drive, adjacent to the Alaska Road Right-of-Way. The applicant has provided a number of detailed photos of the encroachments that are available in the application. The applicant also included nonconforming status determination from May 2017, which notes that the primary single-family structure and the attached garage roof eaves were constructed prior to the setback requirements that came into effect with the adoption of zoning for the area in 1971. Both the original single-family structure and the garage would be considered legally nonconforming but for an enlargement of the garage that was completed sometime after 1986. The enlargement did not result in an increase in the encroachment, rather it intensified the encroachment by converting the existing flat roof of the garage with a raised shed-style sloping roof. This enlargement was in violation of municipal code, which resulted in the garage's loss of its legally nonconforming status. The owners are therefore requesting this variance. Looking at the standards, standard A is substantially met. The subject lot was platted in 1947 through plat P57A, provided in section three of this report, which established a compact lot pattern with rectangular blocks bisected by alleys that measure approximately 225 feet in depth by around 325 to 575 feet in length, depending on the block. Lot sizes were generally between 6,000 to 8,000 square feet, except for the topography of the Fish Creek Drainage required larger lots to provide adequate buildable area. This compact block and lot pattern has persisted to this day and has resulted in a correspondingly compact variety of structures built in close proximity that consist of single-family, duplex, and multifamily residential uses. While the subject lot is slightly larger than many of its neighbors at 8,742 square feet, its triangular wedge shape is notably irregular when compared to the almost exclusively square or rectangular lots that make up the rest of the subdivision. Square and rectangular lots typically allow for more efficient buildable area than irregular-shaped lots. The irregular shape of the subject lot, combined with its location in a highly compact block and lot pattern, appear to have been major contributing factors in the structure and garage being constructed so close to the lot lines. Due to these factors, there are exceptional physical circumstances affecting the subject lot. Standard B is substantially met. The applicants assert that the previous owners replaced the garage's flat roof with a shed-style sloping roof, primarily in order to improve drainage and help prevent water damage to the garage. With few exceptions, a majority of nearby single-family homes in the same zoning district also have sloping roofs. Because the formerly legally nonconforming garage on the subject lot was located so close to the lot lines due to the aforementioned exceptional physical circumstances, the previous owner would have had no choice but to intensify the nonconformity in pursuit of the drainage benefits of a sloping roof, again, a structural element commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district. Standard C is substantially met. The previous owners intensified, or the previous owners intensified the nonconformity through the installation of a sloped roof in pursuit of a structural element that confers drainage and corresponding maintenance benefits enjoyed by most other properties. This improvement was carried out amidst exceptional physical circumstances that are described in standards A and B, which are not self-inflicted. Standard D is substantially met. The owners of abutting lot seven do not object to the variance. They have submitted a comment and a letter stating so, and the shed-style roof slopes in such a way that the highest point is located furthest away from the adjacent property. The increase in the impact of the encroaching sloped roof on the abutting lot seven is therefore so slight as to be almost negligible. As shown in the applicant's photos, the increase in the impact of encroachment to the street and the front setback is similarly slight. Additionally, numerous nearby structures in the same zoning district appear to be located within the front setback required by current code, demonstrating that the encroachment is consistent with the context of the area. Furthermore, the subject property was previously illegally nonconforming structure prior to the roof enlargement and would have continued to exist but for the slight intensification of the nonconformity. Standard E is substantially met. The requested variance is dimensional and would not allow prohibited use or change the character of the zoning district as a whole. Standard F is substantially met. There are no identified health or safety issues. Standard G also substantially met. The standard is not applicable. H, the standard is substantially met. The requested variance is the minimum variance that would allow continued use of the applicant's existing garage. With that being said, the department finds that all standards are substantially met and therefore recommends approval of the variance subject to the conditions on page five of the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff by the board? Seeing none. Will the applicant or the applicant's representative please come forward and state your name and spell it for the record, please?
My name is Mike McLean, M-C capital L-A-N-E, and I'm representing Aaron and Amy DeBrault, the owners. And my background was that I'm a real estate broker that was involved in the, when they purchased the house, and I'm a registered land surveyor and engineer and was familiar with this process, so I thought I'd come up and answer any questions.
So please present your case.
I don't have anything additional that the staff hasn't stated. I really appreciate the help in compiling all this information, and so I think it's pretty self-explanatory with all the pictures and everything, but this will allow for the folks to continue to improve this house. They've really made it look so much nicer than when they purchased it, and it'll allow them to get building permits and even make it better. So it's just a very positive thing of just going through the legal process so they can move forward and continue to enjoy their house. So other than that, I don't have anything to add.
Well, you have nine and a half minutes of rebuttal when-
I know, but we can throw that in the giddy.
Okay. Are there any questions of the applicant by the board members?
All right, thanks a lot.
Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify in case 2019-0139? Anyone at all? Seeing none. Does the staff have anything additional?
No, thank you.
And the applicant, no rebuttal? Okay, we're fine. Then the public hearing is closed, and the matter rests with the board. May I have a positive motion, please? Mr. Hale?
Move to approve the variance for case number 2019-01-
Could you turn your mic on, please?
Is it on? Hello? Hello? All right, gotta get really close. I move to approve the variance in case number 2019-0139, subject to department recommendations one through three on page five.
Ms. Smythe?
Nothing other than I intend to support the motion. I think it's pretty straightforward.
And you do second? So, Mr. Hale, speak to the motion.
I agree with staff findings. I do find that the physical circumstances on the property and the way that it's configured does present quite of a bit of issues with being legally conformable on this lot, so I agree with them that the standards are substantially met. And I guess I have nothing to add to staff recommendations. I agree with A through H.
And Mr. Smythe has already chimed in. Anyone else have anything to add? Is there any objection to approval of the motion? If not, the motion is approved, variance is granted. Reports, I don't have anything. Do you have anything, Laurie?
No.
Nope. No committees? Board member comments? Okay, motion to adjourn. Ms. Iker? Is there a second? Mr. Hale, we are adjourned.